If you would now please silence all cell phones and any electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. So first on our agenda this evening is appointments. I don't think there's any, though. Is there? They're already working. Mr. Hogg says, "A little too late," right? All right, so we are going to consider the ratification of administrative appointments of those that are stated as such on the agenda. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Reich, and I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session for -- it's a long list -- Executive Director of Educational Support Services, Principal for Carter Junior High, Principal for Owlesley Junior High, Principal for Fitzgerald Elementary, Principal for Spear Elementary, and Principal for Starett Elementary, Principal for Wimbis Elementary, Assistant Principals at Arlington High School, at Bowie High School, Assistant Principal at Sam Houston High School, Assistant Principal at Bailey, Assistant Principal at Gunn Junior High, Assistant Principal at Workman, Assistant Principal at Dunn, Assistant Principal at Patrick Elementary, Assistant Principal at Piercy, and at Wood Elementary as discussed in closed session.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept? Mr. Hibbs?
Dr. Reich, I meant that we accept the administrative appointments.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hibbs, second by Mr. Hogg to accept the administrative recommendation on ratification of the appointments. Anybody miss their school out there and go, "Oh, my gosh?" So seeing -- is there any discussion? None? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. Ms. Mays is unable to be with us tonight, so congratulations.
This time. Thank you, President Reich. At this time, I'd like to introduce the new Principal for Carter Junior High, Ms. Claudia Morales-Erera. Claudia attended the University of North Texas for a Bachelor of Business Administration, Texas Women's University for a Master in Ed and Ed Administration, most recently the Principal at Hale Elementary, has been a Principal -- Assistant Principal and a Dean of Students in New York, has been a Principal in Dallas ISD and an elementary ESL bilingual teacher as well. Claudia, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, President Reich and members of the board. I do want to acknowledge my husband who's here in the audience, Pedro Herrera. Honey, hello, thank you. I am honored for the opportunity to serve the Carter Junior High community. As a leader learner, we will work to establish a vision of high standards of learning and continuous improvement. While I'm thrilled to join the Carter familia, my departure from Lynn Hill is bittersweet. I want to acknowledge the Lynn Hill faculty and staff that's here today also for their outstanding work with students and their courage for always putting kids first. Thank you so much.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Principal for Owlesley Junior High, Mr. Grayson Topreser. Grayson attended UT Austin -- I'll pause for that, just a good job, yeah. And Texas -- yeah, we have to have some, right. And Texas A&amp;M Commerce for Master in Ed and Administration and at UT for his Bachelor of Social Work, most recently the Principal of Fitzgerald Elementary, has also been a Principal at Garland ISD, has been an Assistant Principal and bilingual teacher at Garland ISD, has also taught English in Costa Rica, and has been in the Peace Corps in Costa Rica, and has worked for rehabilitative services and training. Grayson, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, School Board, and President Reich, and esteemed members of the School Board, Dr. Cavassos, members of senior staff. Thank you so much for the opportunity to lead a school, a learning community at a different level. I'm super excited about that. To the faculty and staff, students and parents at Fitzgerald Elementary, the third-ranked out of 54 Fitzgerald Firebirds. I want to congratulate them, and I couldn't be prouder of the faculty there. Hard-working students are fantastic there, and I want to acknowledge, you know, that their excellence has opened a professional door for me, and I really appreciate that. To the Owlesley Panther community, staff, students, parents, I just want to let them know that I'm super excited to be there and looking forward to the things that we can accomplish together. And I want to make -- if any of you guys know a Spanish teacher, we're looking for one. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Always working. Very good, very good. Next, I'd like to introduce the Principal for Fitzgerald Elementary, Ms. Cindy Brown. Cindy attended Texas Tech University for a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Ed, UT Arlington for a Master of Ed and Curriculum and Instruction, most recently the Dean of Instruction at Hale Elementary, has been an elementary curriculum specialist with the math department, interim math coordinator, first-grade teacher at Beckham, second-grade teacher, taught kinder at Hale, taught kinder at Atherton, first grade at Atherton. Cindy, congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Reich, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board. I'm thrilled and so excited to get to begin this new chapter of my career in AISD, I won't tell you how long that's been, as the Principal of Fitzgerald Elementary. I'd like to thank Beth Hollinger and the interviewing committees for seeing in me the potential to lead that amazing team that Mr. Topreser has left behind at Fitzgerald. I once heard somebody say that great teachers are not born, they're made by the teacher next door, and I think this is true of all of us in education. I'd like to thank the many people who have helped me to grow and develop in my educational career. First, to the many Principals that I've had the privilege of working for and alongside in this district, many of whom are sitting right here. They've helped me see what it means to be a leader in every aspect of the world. Secondly, to the probably hundreds of teachers who I have gotten to learn from as teammates, coaches, and ultimately friends who are also in this room, every interaction has helped me to learn and reflect on what teaching really is, too, the most important work that one can be chosen to do. And finally, to the thousands of Arlington students, I have loved getting to know and hopefully impact in a positive way as your teacher, dean, or simply your biggest cheerleader. I thank them as well for the learning experience. And I am looking so forward to learning from and with a new family now at Fitzgerald and to help each other grow and positively impact a new group of students' lives in every way. So, thank you.
Next, we'll introduce the new Principal for Spear Elementary, Ms. Selena Elizondo. Selena attended Texas State University to obtain her Bachelor of Science in Education, Sew Ross State University for her Master of Education, most recently the Principal of Goodman Elementary, has been a Principal in Eagle Pass, has also worked as an instructional officer, a host teacher, a fourth-grade teacher. Selena, congratulations.
Thank you. So when you think of Spear Elementary, I want you to think I are, where instruction gets real, where inspiration gets real, and where I get real as a leader. I want to thank you for your confidence in my skill set. Thank you for trusting me with this learning community, the faculty and staff, the students, and their continued educational journey at Spear. I'd like to recognize my better half, Carlos Martinez, and recognize my models in leadership, Dr. Cavassos, area superintendent, that I've worked under, and also all of you. I really appreciate your work. I want to show special, special gratitude for the faculty and staff at Goodman Elementary. What they didn't know is that the last seven years, when they thought they were learning from me, I was learning more from them. And so I take with -- I take them with me to Spear Elementary and hope to work together with them. With that being said, I'd like you to know that my vision for Spear Elementary is that it becomes a lab school for the University of Texas in Arlington. My vision will be fulfilled when I see that happening. Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Principal for Starett Elementary, Ms. Allison Gilmore. Allison attended Texas Tech University for a Bachelor of Science in Early Childhood Education, University of North Texas, Dallas for a Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, most recently the Assistant Principal at Starett Elementary, has been a campus testing facilitator at Crouch Elementary, a sixth-grade teacher at Anderson Elementary, has taught fifth, third, and first. Allison, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Reich, and the board. Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, for untrusting me with this opportunity. It is with a grateful and humble heart that I move into this role as Principal at Starett Elementary. I wouldn't be in this position without all these people behind me today and the Lord guiding my path. I want to take a few minutes to recognize some mentors. Jacqueline Orsini, out there somewhere. She saw something in me and trained me on the skills needed to become a leader. She was brutally honest with me and pushed me beyond what I was capable of, beyond what I felt I was capable of. She really taught me to believe in me. Mr. Wofford took an -- gave me an opportunity three years ago. He took a chance on me. He had confidence in me from the get-go and supported me every step of the way, and I'll forever be indebted to him for that. To the Starett staff, from the moment I arrived, you showed me grace, you learned beside me, you spoke words of affirmation when I needed the most, and you trusted me to lead. You are something special, and I look forward to continuing our work. To my family, thank you is not enough. Justin, my husband, out there. He is a business owner himself, but he works beside me to balance our home and life, and he's my biggest -- our home in our career, and he is my biggest cheerleader. Caroline and Carter, the kiddos, they are my why. I want to lead a school that will help young children like them achieve greatness. Every child deserves that. My parents, who are in the crowd today, you taught me that through your own careers as educators, that this field is noble, rewarding, and worthwhile. I credit your model of work ethic, devotion, and passion for my work in education. And Granny is out there today. I couldn't do life without her. She keeps me afloat. Finally, thank you again for trusting me to lead Starett. I look forward to working with a fantastic leadership staff, and most importantly, on August 20th, when we welcome those 600 familiar faces back in those doors.
Sorry. Next, I'd like to introduce the new Principal for Wimbis Elementary, Ms. Deborah Wall. Deborah attended Tarleton State University for a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education, University of Phoenix for a Master of Ed in Administration and Supervision, most recently the Dean of Instruction at Wimbis Elementary, has been an RTI Specialist, Literacy Coach, 504 Coordinator at Eagle Mountain, has been an Assistant Principal in Keller and Campus Curriculum Coach in Northwest, and has taught Gifted and Talented, and has taught grades three through eight. Deborah, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. I come before you tonight to thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve Wimbis, but now as Principal. I'm excited and honored to start my new administrative journey at a campus that holds my heart, and I know all of you know that. I would like to thank Dr. Christy Beul, who is not here this evening but has already called me, for developing the leaders in this district as she has, and for also seeing leadership within me. And I'm going to tell you something, I've never seen a level of questioning that Christy Beul can offer up to someone who she's trying to coach up, so, you know, she's awesome at it, and I really appreciate her for that. To my parents who are watching at home, Rod and Cheryl Minor, who I want to thank them and tell them how much I love them for instilling in me that you must face every challenge with hard work, you must persevere through that work, and you must learn from every experience. To my love, Ray, sorry, thank you so much for walking this journey with me and listening to all of my interview presentations over and over and over. So, other than the committee, I think he's heard them more. To my children, Chase and Chaley Bricky, and my son Kayden, who was unable to make it today, they are my life, my rock. They have unconditional love and support me, and they are the sunshine that lights my path every day. To my Wimbis family, now this is where I will get emotional, really. You are the most dedicated and hard-working staff that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. We have encountered many challenges together, and we have faced every obstacle with commitment, knowing that the work that we do for our students gives them opportunities they may have never had or experienced. I am committed to sharing a vision that fosters a community of collaboration, a culture and climate of shared responsibility to empower our staff and students of Wimbis, to help them discover their strengths and achieve their maximum potential. I look forward to serving as your principal. Oh, the places we will go.
The other individuals we ratified will be coming to future board meetings for introduction.
Very good. Well, thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Congratulations to each and every one of you. We, if you were not there or did not know, we had our State of the District luncheon this afternoon earlier, and one of the pride points of this board is to boast about the incredible leadership in this district and the leadership opportunities and development opportunities. You all are incredible examples of that. As our school year is about to begin in just a few weeks, thank you in advance for all of the positive impacts that await ahead because of you. Thank you very much. We do want to take just a short recess to acknowledge and welcome you personally and thank you personally, as is our custom. If you would not mind following Mr. Cale to the lobby or to the hallway, wherever he's going to take you, and there's a lot of you, that's why I say that. And then for the rest of the audience, if you would please indulge us as a board to go first so that we can work the line, if you will, and then get back here to work. So we will take a 10-minute recess, be back here at about 7:35. All right, let's call this meeting back from recess. It is 7:42. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, which we have none, so we will move on to the open forum for agenda items. I do not have any cards, is that correct? No cards, so we will move on from the open forum to the action items. The first item is the consideration of the designation of official delegates to the Texas Association of School Boards for the 2018 Delegate Assembly. Let's see, this is an opportunity that we have as a board to appoint delegates and alternates to the assembly to take place during the convention in the fall, the Tasby Convention, so we can have our district represented well. There are a couple of lights here. Mr. Chapa?
Yes, thank you, President Reich. I would move to appoint Keisha Mays as the delegate to the Texas Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly.
All right.
Can we do them both?
Well, yeah, maybe not.
I'll second that.
And second, okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Chapa, second by Mr. Hogg, to appoint Ms. Keisha Mays as the delegate, and for the record, Ms. Mays has served us in this capacity in the past. She's unable to be with us tonight, but we're not pulling one over on her in her absence. She has been notified and willing, if that is the will of the board. So we also have an alternate, I guess, yeah, I guess we'll take this one at a time. So for all those, is there any discussion on the delegate? Okay, then please vote on Ms. Keisha Mays as our delegate. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Mays. Now on to the alternates. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. I would like to nominate Mr. Chapa, Justin Chapa, for our alternate delegate.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Walton, a second by Mr. Hogg for appointing Mr. Chapa as our alternate delegate. Is there any discussion? Any concerns, Mr. Chapa?
Not that I want to talk about.
Not that he wants to talk about. Okay, very good. Seeing no discussion, please vote. All trustees vote in the affirmative, except Mr. Chapa abstained. All right, so we have our delegate and our alternate. Thank you, Mr. Chapa, for being willing to serve, and of course, Ms. Mays to continue in that capacity as well. So we will move on then. The action item be Board Policy CO Local. We're going to move on, we're not going to act or discuss that this evening. So we will move on down to items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items that trustees wish to have withdrawn from consent? All right, seeing none, we will move to consent. So we will be considering the items listed on the agenda under consent. Ms. Powell, any bids to share?
Yes. Dr. Reich, board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. We have bids on the agenda this evening and donations. There are five bids on the agenda, and in all cases, the administration is recommending the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district. In terms of donations, we are starting over tonight with a fresh set of reports for this new year, and so the donations that have been presented to you for consideration this evening total $166,045.
Very good. Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve of consent.
Motion to accept consent.
A motion by Mr. Hibbs is our second. Ms. Fowler?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hibbs, second by Ms. Fowler, to approve consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Consent passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you. All right. Moving on to our discussion item, our main event for the evening, the 2014 Bond Program Update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Reich. And this evening, we'd like to provide the board a bond update on the many projects that are occurring throughout our district and that even some future projects that we'll talk about here tonight as well, but Ms. Powell?
Thank you. Dr. Reich, board members, Dr. Cavassos, we do have this evening a bond program update. A lot of this was covered this afternoon at the State of the District, and the speaker was much more entertaining. I will be, I'm sure, but maybe we can add some color commentary here. Just to refresh everyone's memory, we have passed a bond package in May of 2014. That bond package totaled $663 million. It covers projects in four broad areas, facilities, fine arts, safety, security, and technology is one area, and then transportation. As of now, we have sold all of the bonds that were authorized in that election. You will recall that June 21st, the board took action to approve that final sale of bonds. So now the summary financial report that you see here, and this is very summarized, shows in the budget column all of the budgets for all the projects, phases one through five, and then all of the activity regarding those projects recorded to date. So to date, we've spent a total of $433.9, almost $434 million. We actually have open purchase orders or encumbrances of $80.9 million, and so that leaves us a balance of $148.2 million. And then when you net against that, the bond issuance cost and the other items that get recorded there, including interest and other income, we do still have $156.4 million. These are the dollars that will fund Phase Four and Phase Five projects. We've hired architects for all of Phase Four and all of Phase Five, and we're beginning to, we've been bidding Phase Four work, some of those have come to you, we have more that are coming in the next few weeks, and then the Phase Five work, we still need to bid the construction projects on that. We'll be doing that a little later this fall, once the architects for those projects finish their design work. So here you just see, you know, a pie chart representing or depicting where we are in terms of funding. We spent 65% of the bonds that were authorized in 2014. We have another 12% that are on open purchase orders or open commitments at the moment, and we have 23% of the funds available. And we do believe that we will complete the work on budget, and as we've said many times before, this is a lot different than our last bond program. The circumstances and the market is much, much different, and so we are having to work much more diligently to keep these projects on budget, and so, but it does look like we will get there. In terms of the fine arts area, so far, we've spent $5.6 million from the fine arts bucket of funds. There's another $1.7 million of open purchase orders, and that leaves us with $2.5 million of their portion of bonds yet to spend. The normal cycle with the fine arts piece of this is that the instruments are bid in usually the late winter months, and then the orders are placed usually right after spring break, and so then we begin receiving the instruments late spring and through the summer so that they're there when, most of them are there when school starts. So you see, you see that here with the $1.7 million in open POs. Those are instruments that we expect to be receiving in the next month or so. that we expect to be receiving in the next month or so for this upcoming school year. In terms of their priorities, they are working primarily on ordering instruments. There are no more large-scale uniform replacements scheduled in this particular bond package. The fine arts folks have also worked a lot on the instructional piece of the fine arts dual-language academies that are key components of this bond program, and we've added a third grade cohort for this upcoming year, and so, that, the kids will be moving into that grade for the very first time, so there's curriculum writing and professional development associated with that. We will be welcoming new kindergarten students at each of our two academies also this fall, and then, receiving all those instruments that we just talked about. There's a lot of work that goes into receiving them, recording them on inventory, and getting them distributed. The fine arts staff is also very instrumental and has been all along in planning work on the Fine Arts Center, and so, they participated with the architects really throughout, through the month of June, as we worked on finalizing interiors and getting ready to put that project out for bid. In terms of the Fine Arts Center, one of the pieces of equipment that goes into that building is, there are actually several grand pianos, and so, we wanted to highlight the fact that, once again, that Dan and Linda Diaper and their family donated $135,000 to purchase the grand piano that will sit in the pre-functionary space, the front lobby area, and a group of individuals from the school district, including the Diapers, were able to go, or and the Diapers, to New York City earlier for the rim bending ceremony for that piano. And so, the picture on the right, you see Dan and Linda Diaper watching one of our students play a piano in the Steinway showroom in New York. In terms of the technology area, we've spent $61.9, almost $62 million to date since the bond program began. We have open purchase orders totaling $1.7 million, and so, we still have $18.9 million of bond funds available for the technology piece. Technology breaks their work into several broad categories, so in terms of infrastructure, you can see here just a snapshot of what they've done last year and what they have coming up. On network infrastructure, we completed network upgrades for 11 campuses this past year, we have 18 scheduled this upcoming year. In terms of PA systems, we completed four upgrades in year four, and five schools are scheduled for upgrades in this upcoming year, and then, on telephone systems, in year four, 18 campuses were completed, and we have 17 scheduled this year. The technology folks, I have to compliment Mr. Branham and his staff, have stayed very much on schedule, on track, very efficient in about, in how they've gone about their work throughout the bond program. All of us, all the devices you all have, we all have a part of an enormous inventory of equipment across the district, and part of what they've done with the bond program is manage replacements on five-year cycles for all of that equipment. So, that goes on all the time. In terms of classroom technology, even within that one broad bucket, they break things down into three broad objectives, the first one being the AV standard in the classrooms. We, the elementary schools get interactive projectors, and the secondaries get non-interactive projectors. 64 of our campuses are complete, have received their upgraded equipment. Teacher standards, every teacher in the district has received a laptop and a docking station through this bond program, all of that is complete. And then, finally, in terms of student standards, all of the purchases that we've made for classroom sets have been completed. Chromebooks for grades three through 12, and in that case, every two classrooms will share a cart of Chromebooks, and then, we have iPad carts for all of our pre-K classrooms, and also iPad carts for grades K through 2. On other technology areas, digital signage is a piece that we're working on now. We've been doing some needs assessment and pilot project in that area, and we have this project scheduled for work this upcoming fall. And then, construction, the technology piece of construction projects, I cannot say enough about the amount of work that goes into this and the coordination that takes place between the technology department and plant services. If we have equipment in a room that's being renovated in some way, that equipment has to come down, be uninstalled, and then, when the work is finished, we put new equipment or reinstall equipment, and so, there's a lot of coordination that has to happen on that throughout the project. And so, that, as we've had construction throughout the entire bond program, likewise, technology has been involved in that piece of the work. And then, a printer consolidation project, we've been working at this, starting last year. 17 sites are complete in year four, we have 12 more that are underway, and all the remaining schools will have their printer tech consolidation work done this upcoming year. One of the things that Mr. Branham's always very proud to talk about is our TI grant process. We had a million dollars of bond funds allocated each year over the five-year program for TI grants, and this allows us an opportunity to let the teachers demonstrate to us some innovation involving technology. We use then, their experience to train other teachers, and this is something that has been successful for us. So, we've issued grants totaling $4.2 million to date, totaling 208 grants, and then, we have $1 million left to allocate towards this program in year five. The application window is open, and applications are due September 12th for this upcoming year. In terms of transportation, transportation is, is an area where the buses in particular are ordered once a year, and then, so they, they place that order all at one time, and then, several months later, the buses arrive. Very similar for the white fleet vehicles, most of those are ordered together, and most of those orders have already been placed for year four. So, program term to date, we've spent $12.5 million on transportation. There are still open purchase orders of about $2 million, and then, that leaves us with a balance of $3.8 million, and that will take care of the year five purchases. So, we've ordered 79 buses prior to this year and received all of those. For year four, we ordered 20 buses, and we placed that order in January, takes a long time to get buses. We have received three of them, three, the regular passenger buses. We also ordered 17 propane buses for special ed, and so far, we've received nine of those, and we respect, expect to get the rest of those by the middle of September, and actually, I think most of them should be here by the time school starts. With our white fleet, before this, this previous year, we had ordered a total of 100 vehicles. 80 of those were replacements of existing vehicles, and then, we, we added to the fleet for growth and personnel, another 20 vehicles, along with added some Suburbans to help us with student transportation. For year four, we've already ordered 25 vehicles, again, we ordered those back in the spring. 11 have been received, and the other 14 we expect to get by mid-September. Terms of facilities, as of this report, we have spent $353.9 million. We have $75.5 million on open contracts, open POs, and we still have 120, almost $123 million available to us. And we'll spend some time here on this particular area. You know, summer is our busiest season of work. Now, with this particular bond program, we work year-round, and, but, summer is the biggie for us, and so, we're going to look at some pictures of summer work, and please know that this work happens fast and furiously during the summer, and so, many of these pictures were taken a week ago, and if you would go look at these sites now, you're going to see tremendous progress even from the pictures you see. This particular slide summarizes the active projects to date. Even since we sent your packets out, we've closed seven more projects, and so, I think the packet that you all received showed that there were 101 projects. Well, just in the last day or so, we've managed to close another seven and moved them over to the closed bucket, so they've come off of this list, so we have 94 that are actively running at the moment. 30 of those are in the construction category, and 35 of those have had active work going on this summer. So, back to the summer construction and the pictures we're about to see, we coordinate all of our work with campus principals always, and we coordinate our work around school schedules. We are very aware that August 20th is the first day of school, and we are, we will be ready then for school to take place, schools will open. We actually have given our contractors a deadline by which we want them basically to stop down and start cleaning up, and then, our staff will come in and likewise clean, and basically, as I've always said, we just kind of get out of the way. With the bond package of this size and the fact that it's a five-year program, we don't have the luxury of just doing work during the summer, we do work year-round at all of our sites, and our principals and teachers have just, have been wonderful to work with and very accommodating. It's, it's not clean work, usually, there's dust and, and you know, and there may be noise, and we, we try very, very hard to plan and work around classes and not disrupt campus operations, and they've been real troopers through all this, and we sincerely appreciate that. But we do know that school's about to start, and we work very closely with the principals to make sure that their buildings will be ready and safe and, and welcoming for our kids on the first day of school. We will still have work going on, absolutely, throughout the year. I'm going to show you several slides where we tried to categorize projects into different buckets, just to show you where we are. The Phase One projects, majority are closed out, we have several that are still in that closeout phase where the construction's done, we're occupying the space, we still have some things to wrap up with those contracts. The Phase Two projects, this is where there was a change from the packet that we sent you all earlier in the week. We have moved seven projects that were STEM lab and vestibule construction projects over to the closed bucket from the closeout one that you received earlier. And you can see on the far left, there are several schools, seven schools, I believe here, that are in construction and will be pretty much throughout the rest of this year, except Sherrod is about to wrap up and will move into that closeout session, probably the next time you see this report. The others will have work going on throughout the year. And some pictures of some of that work, this is a parking lot on the east side of Arlington High School. It will be a parking lot on the east side of the high school.
At the east side.
Yes. And other pictures of Arlington High School, some of their renovation work. This is at Sam Houston, the improvements that we're making in the auditorium and the band At Ellis Elementary, this is in their new addition, and this work is done, and we'll be occupying that, this is a look at the, the end product here. We do have a little bit of site work left at Sherrod, and that work is taking place this summer. And then, at Starrett, Starrett is getting a new strings room, and so, you see here the demo work that's done inside an existing classroom to, to create that space. South Davis and Morton are part of a package with Arlington High School. That work has really just gotten underway recently, and so, these two schools have several months of work left to go, but you can see on the left, both of these actually are STEM labs, where we've done demo work and are preparing to, to create STEM labs for these folks. The Phase Three projects, this work, a lot of it is in construction, and we have, in the bid category, the Fine Arts Center. The Fine Arts Center, and then, when we get to the slide for Phase Four, you'll see the athletics complex, those bids were due in today, and so, we'll now start the process of evaluating those bids, and we'll bring a recommendation to you all, we anticipate September 6th. So, this work is very much in, in process. We've got a number of pictures here, this is a classroom addition at Sagin, and I say, when I look at this, you just hardly can tell it's an addition, I mean, it looks, it ties in so nicely to the main building, but this will be open for the start of school. This is a look inside, the picture on the left is a renovated dance space at Sagin, the picture on the right is the hallway in that, that addition. At Gunn, this is a picture of some site work, a new drive on the south side of the Gunn campus, and a picture of a track. Our tracks, we were doing a lot of work at the, the junior high schools on their fields and their tracks, all but Carter are getting a new track. For all of them, all those that are getting tracks, it's required us to actually move the football fields, and so, they're all getting new fields with sod, on them, new sod fields, and so, that work is progressing quite well. You can see pictures of several different schools here, Bowles, Bailey, and Carter. Carter, because of the creek that runs near the field and some erosion along the walls of that creek, we cannot, there is not enough room to put a track around that field, but we're doing some additional work to enhance their particular site. They likewise are getting a new field, we're locating it closer to the building, they're getting an additional one-half length football field for a practice field, new walkways down to the field, new bleachers, so, they are likewise getting significant improvements on their campus. And then, at Workman, Workman's field and track were actually not part of the bond program. We had determined, after the bond assessment was done, that we really needed to resurface the track at Workman, so we had already planned to resurface the track out of our general operating fund. We've been very, very fortunate to partner with the Gene and Jerry Jones Arlington Youth Foundation and the NFL, as those groups gave us a significant donation, or donations, along with Helus, the contractor, that have allowed us to really enhance what we're doing here. In the meantime, we ultimately, site work, civil investigation, determined that the track was in poor enough condition, the subgrade, that we wound up not just resurfacing the track, but we are completely replacing the track. So, the district is contributing that cost, and the funding from the other entities I mentioned will pay for a new turf field at Workman, new lighting, new poles, and a new video board. And so, this is a field that all of our junior highs will have access to, so we can play football under the lights in the fall, and this is a significant improvement, significant enhancement for the entire community, so we're very, very excited about that. Other projects here, Phase Three, Berry, this is a classroom addition that we STEM labs here. At Dunn, the picture on the left, we are almost finished there, they, they literally are down to the work here in the entryway, I believe, where we've got a security vestibule and reworking a little bit of that entrance for them. On the right is a picture from Butler. Butler's another project that's really gotten underway this summer, and so, they'll have construction pretty much through this upcoming year. Other site work at Hill and Swift, adding sidewalks and ADA ramps, and then also, a new drive in front of Swift. And Dr. Cavassos called us out today at lunch and, and said, you know, HVAC and mechanical improvements aren't always all that exciting, they certainly are for the people inside the buildings, as he acknowledged, and, and for us, it makes our... for us, it makes our, our learning environment's much more comfortable. It protects our investments in the building, and, and we, as a staff who maintain these kinds of facilities and equipment, are very pleased when we get these upgrades. On the left, we have a picture at Pope. Pope sphere, Webb and Wimbush are all in one bond package together, so that work will be ongoing for a while. The picture on the right, again, this is one that got some attention today at State of the District with our helicopter-setting air conditioning unit on top of the building. We have STEM labs at John's on the left, and then at Goodman, renovations to the administrative office area. Some more exterior work on the left, Key is getting a, a new awning. That, and it's, it's really amazing what something even that simple does to the look, the whole look of a building, really gives it a new, fresh look, a new pop, if you will, and also provides cover weather days when it's raining and what have you. On the right, at Short, you see construction workers planning landscape there. Again, it really helps the curb appeal of the building. Amos and Atherton, both you see here, exterior improvements, again, really enhancing the looks of our buildings, making them more inviting and easier to get from parking lots into buildings. Again, some on the left, South Davis getting new air conditioning units. They really struggled last year with one that went out in a particular area of the building, so we, we've been managing that, but brand-new units, so they should have a much better comfort level and better performance this year in terms of mechanical equipment. On the right, Morton, more STEM labs. The Phase Four projects, you see in the bid category, a number of bids. All of these, except for athletics, may be ready even for the next board meeting to bring to you all to award. The athletics complex will come with the Fine Arts Center. We're targeting that first meeting in September. The others that you see here on the right are still in the design phase. And then the Phase Five work, we have hired architects for all of these projects. They have been doing their site investigations and early design work, meeting with principals, what have you, to identify specifically the, the work to be done there. We anticipate that these bids will go out mid to late fall, and we'll award these, and we should have these projects up and running. I would anticipate all of them being underway for the most part by February. Terms of our, our hub reporting, we have through the end of June, actually have, have recognized 17.35% participation in the contracts that are underway, and we have total commitments of just under 25% at the moment. On the Fine Arts and Athletics Complex, these two projects have, have been in design for a year, with a lot of input from the Fine Arts staff throughout the district and the athletics folks, the, the coaches that use, coach swimming, diving, and our coaches even for volleyball, basketball, wrestling, have had tremendous input on these projects. These interior renditions were ready in June, so you all are just seeing those really for the first time. And as I mentioned a minute ago, the bids have come in today, so we're, we'll be taking those bids and, and beginning evaluations of those. So this is really getting exciting, and we are very anxious to, to get started breaking ground on this. So this is a picture of the concert hall at the Fine Arts Center. You'll notice there's no proscenium, no curtains on the stage, a very clean, open look for performing arts, for musical performances. It's a picture of the small theater, also in the Fine Arts Center. The concert hall will accommodate 1,200 individuals, 1,200 seats. The theater has 425 seats. This is a picture of the pre-functionary space. On the left, you will see the little pillbox, as our architects describe it. That's where the piano, the grand piano that the Diaper family has donated will sit. Just to the right, around the corner of the grand staircase is the art gallery. And this is a picture of the art gallery. And what I like most about this particular rendering is that all the art in that rendering is AICD student art, which I find amazing, but, but it is. And this is the educational learning stairs and more the educational side of the house, if you will. On the right-hand side, you see another grand piano, and you see a track there. There's a retractable wall that will open and close there, so you can have small performances, a class, what have you, or you can close it for a private class. This is a picture in the lobby area in, in front of the arena of the athletics complex. And remember that these two buildings will be built side by side on property that we own on Division Street, just immediately south of AT&amp;T Stadium. We also have in that athletics complex, a, an arena. You see the seating around that. And the natatorium. We have a 50-meter pool here, separate from the competition pool is a warm-up pool, that we have a 25-yard warm-up pool that's actually in a separate room that has a connector hallway to this space. So September 6th, as I mentioned, is the date that we plan to bring a recommendation to the board for the award of these contracts. They are being bid together for a single construction contract, and then September 13th is our groundbreaking for this, this project. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. I appreciate the update and the information. We do have some questions from trustees. Ms. Walton?
No.
You canceled yourself out.
I did, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Thank you, sir. I, early on in the presentation, when we were talking about security and technology, there's been a lot of buzz about the printer consolidation program from teachers, you know, which I was one at one time, and I understand teachers don't like change and, and so forth, but can you give us, can you give us the, kind of the purpose for this, and help me kind of help others understand what's happening?
Let Mr. Branham talk about that. I think he has more direct experience with it.
Sure.
Good evening.
Hello.
So obviously, one of the things that we have been working on for a couple of years is consolidation of printers. One of the large expenditures we have across the district is the amount of ink or toner that we purchase at all of our campuses, as well as the amount of paper that we utilize, where obviously there's still a need for some of that. We feel that we can do that more efficiently across the entire system. So we began, really, two years ago, doing some field testing at, at various campuses regarding what a consolidated printer model could and might, could look like, and get campus feedback. So through that process, we pretty much were able to pare down and identify what we felt might work well at elementary, junior high, and high school level. So as a part of the bond program, we built in funds for ongoing printer replacement. So we, through that process, basically took the next steps to start phasing in campuses with a centralized printing model that will allow us not only to save money across the district, but also allow us to support all the printers in a more effective way. That is a challenge at some campuses. It's a different concept and model for a lot of people, so there, there is an adjustment for that. But I'll tell you that we have given, we've worked hand-in-hand with our campus administration to make sure that we're all on the same page with where printers are going to be located in that building, and have them share that with their staff. We've also provided a great flexibility with working with them on the number of print, print jobs that individual staff members can do. So we've tried to be as flexible as possible while we phased in to make them more comfortable with a consolidated printer approach. It is based upon the size of the building, so larger campuses obviously will have more printers than smaller buildings. And it's an ongoing process. You know, we're going to continue to adjust as needed. Some buildings simply are laid out differently than others. So we're having to work through some of those challenges, too. But our, overall, our concept of that is, was to reduce our footprint, to save our costs, to make it more efficient for us to support them across the system.
Some of the questions I've had are from special ed personnel. Usually a consolidated printer is somewhere off from where their office is or whatever, and the confidentiality of leaving sensitive material about children and their IEPs and that sort of thing on a common printer for any length of time.
Yes.
So.
How are we addressing that?
Yeah.
One of the nice things about our new standard is it is, is a secure print platform. So it actually submits the print job to, to a queue. So you literally have to achieve, retrieve the job from the printer using your ID badge. So there's nothing that spits out on a printer unless you're physically at the printer doing it yourself.
Okay.
So that's one of the advantages, advantages of this. From a counseling perspective, from a nurse's perspective, from a special ed perspective, any sensitive information, it really takes that all the way, because it allows you to do that securely.
Okay. And is, is this going to like a big printer, like, that looks like a big, the old copy machines or something?
One of the, the other great thing about this printer model is some, a staff member can print to any printer across the district, and they can retrieve it from that printer. So if I'm at this building, if I'm at the PDC or another building, they can retrieve their print job regardless of where they're at. So that's one of the nice things about it. So from a proximity perspective, yes, they may have to walk a little bit longer to go get a print job, but they literally can retrieve it from any printer in any facility across the district.
So, so what kind of feedback are you getting on this?
Oh, they love it. You know, just like with anything, it's, it's, it's pros and, pros and cons. It's a process, just like anything else, but our principals have been wonderful to work with. They've really worked with us to, to try to make it a positive, and, you know, I, I would say, as, as they've evolved and used the, the printer, printer standard, I think they're becoming, they're warming up to it. It just takes time. People are passionate about their printing. And when they've had one historically in their, directly in their classrooms for many, many years, it's hard to get them to think differently about that. So, so we expect that, and we'll work through that. But I'll tell you, if there's any custom situations that we have, we'll work with them. You know, there's always going to be special circumstances that we have to address, and we'll, we'll consistently do that if we need to.
And what kind of cost efficiency are we seeing from it?
Oh, gosh. I would have to go and run some reports on, we've done some of that, but it's been a little bit, since I've looked at that, I can bring that back and share that with you guys.
Okay.
On some of those efficiencies. One of the nice things about it is most of our campuses spend a lot of money on color toner cartridges, so principals are very leery about letting staff members print, print color at their campus. So it gives them a, a greater control over the type of printing that they could do with the campus to control their costs, as well as any large print jobs. If a teacher were to print a large stack of, of print jobs or a volume of print jobs, we can automatically redirect it to large copy machines that make it lower cost per page. So there's automated ways to really direct the cost of, of large print jobs that teachers do at campuses and/or across the district as well. But we can, we can run that analysis and give you an idea of what that savings has looked like.
Yeah. Well, when you kind of, you know, get to a point where you're assessing that, yeah, I'd like to see that. And the other thing that just, you know, always was a problem was you would need a copy, you know, something, and you would go to the copy machine to get it, and the copy machine would be down and not working. Has, I hope that's improved, but has, has this idea of consolidation done anything to improve the, you know, the, the product or the equipment or?
I think so, yes. I mean, we have, we've standardized on Canon as our printer standard, as well as our copier standard. So from a support perspective, over the past school year, it, it definitely has improved. I would say we're very happy with the customer service that we receive from them, and it's nice to have a singular product that we can utilize across the system, just that, you know, it's a standard interface, so no matter what printer I go to, it's the same.
It's the same.
And that makes it nice for staff members as well.
Yeah. I just ordered me a new Canon, because my old Canon died yesterday. Yeah, I'm like, anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate all your help.
You bet.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Walton. Are there other trustees that have questions on this bond update? I, I don't see any. I do have one question regarding the, the campuses that have construction in the entry with security vestibules or other, and the, the parking lots that will be ready for start of school. What type of communication strategy is happening for those campuses for registration in, in advance as far as alternate pathways into park and, and pardon our progress and that type of thing?
Johnson, Burdo, excuse me, will answer that.
Miss Burdo.
Hard time getting used to that.
Right.
We're working with the campuses as they decide to, we need to adjust locations, and so we, we're working with the area superintendent's office to determine what those locations are, and then helping them with calls or signage or whatever they need. We've also been working with technology to make sure if they're moving locations completely, that they have the copiers and computer equipment that they need for registration.
Okay. Great.
There are some campuses that are relocating for registration. John's, for example, is going over to six, not John's, Berry's going over to 600 New York. They're just moving nearby so that we can have that other week for construction and not have so much interference maybe with parking or whatever's happening at the campus. We typically have a couple that move every year as we've been doing construction, so we have a system in place to help them.
Ms. Walton, yeah, if you have questions, if you could go ahead and, and request, and I'll put your mic on. No, that's fine. Go ahead.
What about the ones that were in the pictures, Arlington High and, and Swift?
They're doing registration out of their cafeteria, so they have shared that with their families.
I knew there was a strategy. I was just curious what it was, and, and so at the, are, are there any projects, Ms. Powell, that, as, as far as the ongoing work that will not be done for the start of school that will cause an adjustment as far as any teachers not being able to work in their, their, what would be their regular classroom space or any?
There, and there may be rooms or places where we have to swing classrooms. That's not unique to this year, all along, and especially where we've done roof work. We cannot have kids in classes and roof work going on overhead. We work with the principals ahead of time and identify places where we will swing kids to while work is taking place in their rooms. We're doing the same thing now. Our, our project managers work very closely with the campus principals ahead of time, really, and they identify where we have opportunities to swing kids, and, and we work very closely with the contractor then to phase the work and to work enough ahead, schedule enough ahead, that we can give notice to those that need to move. And so it's, you know, it's, construction is not convenient, but we've been very fortunate. We have good staff throughout the district that have been very gracious and accommodating to let us come in and do our work that we need to do in their space, and they relocate temporarily and move back. And typically, it's not a, a very long period of time that they do have to move.
Okay. Very good. And I think as Dr. Cavasso stated earlier today, with regard to Mr. Horn, it's always the question, when are you coming, when are you leaving? And, yeah, pardon our progress. It's, it's tremendous. It's great progress. Nice to hear that you can breathe easy now down to 94 projects instead of 101. That's phenomenal. It's such a tremendous undertaking. I really appreciate Mr. Horn, your, your department, and Ms. Powell on the financial side, and, and all the people at all the campuses that are enduring these, these things. Great things ahead for the, for the students. It's just this in-between time. So I don't see any other, one more, one more call for any questions from trustees? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much. So I look forward to continued progress. Saying none, thank you very much, and I look forward to continued progress. Okay. So, moving on, we are at the Open Forum for Non-Agenda Items portion, and I see no cards. Is that correct? No cards. So we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice. I'd like to share some information about our district. First, it seems like just yesterday, we were at six high school graduations. We had over four thousand graduates in the class of 2018, so congratulations one more time. Summer school graduation is August seventh, and we'll be looking forward to those graduates as well. The district's extended year for special needs students is always a very festive time when they participate in the annual Fourth of July Parade at Bergen Elementary. They had matching shirts and signs. They paraded through the halls for parents, teachers, and fellow EY students at Bergen. So thank you for our staff and our wonderful parents and students every year that participate in that. Also, AISD was very well represented, as always, in the Arlington Fourth of July Parade. Marching band, color guards, drill team, cheerleaders, and even some people on the float were very well represented, and so it was a great day to be in Arlington, as the Fourth of July Parade is very festive. We had a special signing ceremony last week for four former AISD students and eighteen current students that signed with Lockheed Martin, the company's high school intern signing day. The four former students signed post-college graduation job offers that day as part of the inaugural Lockheed Martin internship group. And as I mentioned earlier today, those students truly led the way for other districts also to participate in this, and now other districts are having interns at Lockheed Martin. And they actually signed their job offer there, and we asked them afterwards, you know, how much? And they didn't say. But actually, we asked them if they negotiated, and they said, not really. So, but we're very proud of them, and they will negotiate the next one, I'm sure. But Lockheed Martin has been an exceptional partner with us, and they continue to do that, so we're very proud of them. Our AISD principals, assistant principals, and deans went through two days of Instructional Leadership Academy last week at the PDC, and you see them all there, our wonderful principals, assistant principals, and deans throughout the district. They're an outstanding leadership group. They really are, and we're blessed to have them in our district, leading our schools and our instruction every day. And so I'm proud of this group and certainly wish them an outstanding school year as they lead the instruction in our district. I remind everyone that Saturday, August eleventh, is our annual back-to-school kickoff. There's still time to register to volunteer, where we hand out backpacks and other services to students. We're also still taking donations. Fifteen-dollar donation provides one student with a backpack and supplies for the year. So please consider being a part of that as well. And finally, I want to take a moment to recognize someone who has probably seen and been part of more board meetings than anyone in AISD history. So Spence has hit a milestone of twenty years, and here's some pictures of Spence. So congratulations. Twenty years of covering AISD board meetings in some form or fashion. He deserves a big congratulations. And I know, Spence, you usually prefer to be behind the scenes, but I want to make sure we thank you for your commitment, Spence, your humor, if that's what you call it, but your humor. And Spence, we love you, and like I told you at the principals' meeting, thank you for being such a great servant, servant heart for our district. And those pictures are wonderful. I really, that other one at Texas Ranger Stadium was kind of interesting, but all the other ones look great, Spence, and so we appreciate you and thank you so much for serving our district. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. And yes, congratulations, Spence. We all love you and appreciate what you do day in and day out, and as those pictures reflect, that forever-ever infectious smile, such a positive spirit. Thank you, Spence. Enjoy that cupcake. All right. Are there trustees that have any reports? Mrs. Fowler, go ahead.
Yes, I had the privilege of attending Sagin High School's first annual Football Booster Club Golf Tournament last Friday. And luckily for everyone, I did not play golf. I was just there to represent us. But it was a very nice occasion. There were fifteen teams of four, so I thought that was pretty good for their first one. They had a silent auction, they had giveaways. It was out at Tierra Verde Golf Course, and it was really a nice day. The rain held off, and it was a little overcast, so it was a good time, and they send their regards to everyone, and I do have gift golf towels for us all, so you'll be the proud recipient of those. But it was a very nice occasion, and I appreciated being invited to it.
That's terrific. Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there other trustees that have reports? No? Okay. I do want to make an announcement to everybody that tomorrow morning, I will be participating in a property tax forum put on by the chamber. I'll be representing the local school districts in the area that are under the Greater Arlington Chamber or nearby. Glenn Whitley will be presenting on the county's perspective. Matt Kraus will be providing the state legislature's perspective, and Vance Ginn, I believe, from the Texas Public Policy Foundation, will be presenting a different perspective. And so I will be there, I believe. Will you be there, Dr.? Dr. Cavassos will not, but I believe Ms. Powell will be, and Mr. Drolinger, and I'm going to be looking forward to having your support in the audience. So anyway, it should be a good forum to just continue to carry our message out there about what property tax and valuations actually mean to us as far as the school finance system here. With that said, Ms. Mays is not here. Ms. Walton, you graciously agreed to cover, to fill in as far as secretary. Do we have any items to consider?
No.
Oh. Go ahead.
No. I did ask Mr. Brannum for something, but that can just come whenever he, you know, when that comes back to us for a report. That'll be plenty, so nothing special.
All right. Very good. Well, the time is now eight thirty-nine PM. We are not going into closed session. This meeting is adjourned.